Mr. President, are we all present?
Good evening, council. I'm gonna ask you all to turn on your cameras. I have already gotten an audio check from Councilwoman Schop.
Hello, testing.
Thank you, Mel. Liz, can you unmute yourself? Make sure we can hear you?
Hello.
Oh, perfect. So now I'm just waiting for President Brzezinski, Councilman Menarski, and Michael Keyes. I know they're down.
Can you hear me, Frank?
I can. Thank you, David.
Okay, great. Just want to make sure.
Yeah, I had heard you before, so I wasn't.
Got it. Got it. Thanks.
Judging by the look in council chambers, I don't think we're ready to go yet.
Hello, everybody. Everybody there? Probably muted, huh? Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay. Sorry for the delay. We had a little problems here in the main office. Kathy, you had a question for finance? What the? You're muted, Kath.
Thank you, Mr. President. I apologize. I had asked Paul Lichtenwalter to be on today if we had any questions regarding our payment for the Water Authority money, and I invited him to be present to talk to us, to help us out with any questions that we may have today.
Super. Is he here? Okay.
Yes, he is here.
I don't see his pretty face. Anybody have any questions for Paul?
Ed, I'm here.
Okay, there you are. I found you.
I'm at home, not here. I'm not down there. I'm home.
Okay.
And well, David, David, did you get my response back this afternoon?
Yes, I saw it. I didn't look through all, but I'm kind of looking at it right now, just a little bit. But thank you.
Yeah, it was kind of late in the day, so I didn't want to type. So I just, you know, it was a PDF. So I printed it out and I gave you some answers.
Yeah, sorry for the lateness in the questions, but I did see the answers there. Thank you for responding.
Okay.
Dave, since you and I collaborated on those questions, are we? And Kathy, I'm not sure. I didn't know that we were going to talk about them tonight. I thought it would be, you know, shared with all of councils. So I think it would be good for the rest of council to know what our questions were and then what Paul's answers were. But what's your preference? I haven't had a chance to look at the responses.
Yeah. Paul, do you want to just kind of talk about something? I don't think they were long extensive questions. They were just, the first questions were questions about what we approved, what we did, and just kind of confirming. I don't know if we want to just run through those quickly. I don't know what other council questions are out there.
Why don't you tell us your questions first, David, to get an idea what's going on?
Yeah.
Dave, could you just tell all the questions that we put together? Because I think mine were more than just what we approved, I believe.
Yeah. Well, the first questions were, when did we approve the tax lien sale? And Paul just reminded us that what date those were approved and he attached it. And then we're confirming, we did approve the economic development opportunity that was in the paperwork that he had given us. And we approved it by ordinance. And there was, I think that we knew the answer to that, and we were just confirming. And then the question about the general budget for shortages of 15 million. And Paul noted the council approved moving 15 million to restricted fund balance in the general fund. And I think that was it for those questions. Let me continue with the other sheets here.
Didn't I, I followed up on Jim's question about paving. And I had questions about, you know, we're committed to not raising property taxes or income taxes, but I had questions about other possible fee increases or new fees, and new fees possibly, I think we need more information related to Jim Winarski's question about paving. Probably some historic or institutional wisdom, because I wasn't on council when those bonds were approved for paving. Jim asked, what happens when those bonds are retired or paid back, I believe? How are we going to get paving done? And I think that there was a response, something about some kind of streetlight fee or something. I just think we need to know and be able to let our constituents know that, I don't know how to say this, even though we're going to keep the burden off of raising property taxes and income taxes for three years, we still have needs, and there may be other fees that we may be increasing. I think we also need to know what the plan is for, you know, short-term sewer fee increases and what the Water Authority's plan is for raising those fees, just so we can put it in context. So I don't know if Paul got to those or not, but I was trying to follow up on Jim's question about paving specifically. There's also talk about a stormwater management fee, which would spread the burden, you know, to nonprofits that don't pay property taxes. Now, I just think, I thought that the mayor did a really good job. Mayor and Paul did a really good job in, you know, presenting the information. But once you have a chance to digest it, we had some additional questions, and I'm sure constituents might have additional questions too. So, Dave, I'm not sure if, since I don't have Paul's response in front of me, did he answer those? Or can we get those answers for the future? We don't need them tonight, but I think we do need it before we go forward.
Well, I could just send all these to council as a follow-up to this, so we don't have to take, because, you know, there's a lot of discussion here. So I could just forward this to council, these questions that I had, and they could review it, and then we can kind of go from there, if that's all right. Or if Paul wanted.
That works for me. I'd like to be able to absorb it, so.
Yeah. Or if Paul wanted to address any of them tonight that he thought that might be pertinent for a group discussion, that'd be fine.
Yeah, I think, I'm sorry for interrupting, David. Before, I'll go through, I think we went through page one, that most of those things were done by ordinance, by council. Page two, you know, you asked the question about the $15 million, and yes, we did appropriate that into a restricted fund balance. What, you know, you asked a question about what departments or positions can we do without? You know, I would say that we prepare a budget that we feel we can live with. So that, you know, that, I guess, would be up for discussion or debate that I don't think any department head would want to give up any of their headcount. But Liz, the next question goes to what you were asking about, you know, you made mention of the fact that the Water Authority does raise their fees 5% every year. In the back of our budget book, the last three years, we've presented those five-year forecasts where we have shown what we're projecting that the sewer and refuse increases will need to be over the next three, four, five years. And just to use an example, the sewer fund, you know, as long as the flows are all staying where they normally are and no expenses get out of line, you know, we're looking at a 5, 4, 1, 7, 1% increases over the next five years. So that was that, that information, and I sent that to David also. That's in the back of the budget book. Stormwater fees, streetlight fees, you know, anything the mayor would propose, and I know he's on, if you'd like to speak to that, you know, that would all be up for councilmatic, both discussion and approval. So we're looking into those things. We had a consultant come in to look at what a stormwater fee would be. Finance Department's done a boatload of work on streetlight fees and what other municipalities are charging and, you know, square, or not square, linear footage in the city for the streets. You know, but to answer, to go back to how much, we spend about $1 million a year on streetlights. And that all comes out of the liquid fuels fund. So if we were just going to propose trading one for the other, we could save, or not save, we could save $1 million in bond spending by instituting a streetlight fee that would be equal to a, to the $1 million we spend in liquid fuels money. And then how much do we spend annually on paving? And that's on page 57, the last three years, in the budget handout book, we've shown what our prospective paving plan is going to be. So pull out your budget handout book, page 57, all three years, it just worked out that that page was the page that showed the full paving plan for the city of Erie. How much bond, how much is left from the bond proceeds? We have about $5.5 million in the bond bank account right now that can be used on paving. Now, the bond indenture that council, the mayor, signed three years ago, or two years ago, sorry, in 19, when the last bond was issued, said that that money would be spent by 2022. So we're going to have to spend that money in the next two years, which works out about perfect for what we normally spend in a year. You know, if we spend $2.5 million from a bond, we spend $1 million from liquid fuels. We spend some CDBG money on downtown streets and curb cuts. And that's how we normally get to our $4, $4.5, $5 million that we try to spend each year, you know, weather permitting, everything else that goes into the whole paving season. And then the last, the Susquehanna group, the last, I gave David, and I'm sure everybody has it in the, my rate of paperwork that I've sent out, but the last analysis, the potential Erie Water Works lease securitization, I gave that paper out to show what, you know, any savings or any expenses that would have happened once we took that, took that deal. And I know I ran through that real quick, but after everybody's had a chance to digest this, and again, I apologize to David. I got this about 4 o'clock in the afternoon, and I, you know, I wanted to make sure he got this for tonight, so I didn't sit down and type up a, you know, a narrative on this. I just handwrote the answers to his questions, but please, you know, call me anytime. I'll be in the office. So call me and ask me anything you want about any of this stuff or anything else that may come up.
Okay, Paul?
Yes.
Although you said we have about 5.5 left in our paving, and we have to use it by 2022.
Correct.
And if we're on the average of, and even if we go on the light side of $4 million a year.
Yes.
And we may, if we institute a streetlight fee, save a million or have a million at hand for paving, where are we going to get the rest? And I know they mentioned, you mentioned.
Jim, the rest in the future or the rest?
The rest in the future. I'll say 23, 24, 25.
We're working on that as we speak.
Because as we know, we could probably almost spend twice as much every year to take care of all the necessity of the streets in our city. And I, it's the climate we live in, we realize that, but and we only have a short time to take care of that. But my main question is where we're going to come up with the shortfall after 2022?
Well, a good question. And as I said, we're working on that. Mr. Mulville and Mr. Zisk are working on, you know, short-term paving plans, long-term paving plans. So we'll have to figure out what, what amount of money we'll need to spend in the future, you know, how much CDBG funding will be available for the downtown area, how much we're going to need to spend on curb cuts, a multitude of different variables to the spending portion. And then the revenue portion, again, we're working on that too. You mentioned the, the streetlight fee, which hasn't been proposed yet, or, you know, hasn't really even been discussed. It's, you know, it's been, the words have been spoken, but council hasn't had a chance to talk about it. The mayor obviously hasn't proposed a full streetlight plan, so that stuff's all in its infancy right now.
Okay. Paul, you mentioned curb cuts. Is there ever a year we're going to catch up on all the curb corners and not have that part of our budget?
I'd like to say yes, but due to the consent decree. I'd like to say yes, but due to the consent decree, you know, anytime we fix up streets more than 50% or, you know, 50% up to complete, if the curb cuts, you know, we have to look at that. And Mr. Tushak has all the, the, the charts and graphs as to where we are with, you know, finishing the consent decree that came about, I'm going to say 18, 20 years ago. And every time we think that we're up to date on that thing, something new comes up. So Jim, I don't want to be a naysayer, but I'm going to say that there's always going to be curb cut work that has to be done.
Thank you.
Maybe not to the extent, maybe not to the extent of 2003, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8, 9, 10, but there's always going to be curb cut work that has to be done.
Okay. Thank you, Paul.
Any other questions?
Mr. President, can we, and I'll ask our finance liaison, can we, maybe our next finance meeting, get the questions from David and Liz and have further discussion? The last thing, once again, I know the mayor and the administration, Paul, have presented us, and yes, it's a, it sounds good on paper, but there's still too many question marks that need to be answered that we don't have answers to yet. So let this being an ongoing discussion, and there again, maybe at our April finance meeting, we can have more answers, more information moving forward.
Jim, can I speak to that? I spoke, or can I speak to that? And I'm going to say I've spoken to Tim Senate, who's normally used, been used as bond counsel. He's willing to come and talk to council about the legalities of it. We could have either Nick Falgio from PNC or the people at Susquehanna Group talk about the, the, the process of defeating the bonds. You know, you as a group, just tell me what you need or what you want or how you want it presented, and we'll try our best to get that put together.
So with that being said, maybe we should look more so for a study session than just a caucus at our finance meeting or something like that. Do a broader timeframe to help us digest all this. Mr. President, if we.
We could do that with Liz and Mike to do this. Pick a date, one of you guys pick a date and go forward with it.
I mean.
Good idea.
Does that sound good to council to have a study session regarding this proposal that's been put in front of us and then go with the questions David had and Liz and see what the future holds beyond 2022 with our paving and.
Mr. President?
Yes, sir.
I think it would be a good idea to have a study session, but also I would like to have all three entities present at that session so we can get all our answers and concerns there, and then we can move forward and we don't have to revisit it again.
Great point.
Sorry if I answered him, Mr. President. So if we will, then we'll set up a study session probably.
Study session set up on that. Should we take a look at the agenda and see if there's any questions people have on it?
I have one more question for Paul. Could you send out the paydown schedule? We had, we had them here in council chambers last, last meeting, but I don't believe we had an email to us, a hard copy, and I think mine was left here in chambers. And so.
Yeah, Michael, I'll do it tomorrow morning. I was, for tomorrow sometime when I remember. How's that?
That'd be good.
Okay.
Moving on the agenda, I guess I got no calls on my idea of having one meeting in July. If people are against it, I can pull it now. Just listening, want to hear from the, the rest of the board on the idea again.
Mr. President?
Yes, sir.
I have no problem with the one meeting for two months. My concern is what, if something come down from administration that desperately needs our vote one way or the other, how will we handle that?
I understand we have a 24-hour window on that, Mel.
Oh, okay.
Mayor would call us, we could set up a meeting within 24 hours and get it done. That'd be only for one month, not two.
Oh, I thought it was, okay, two meetings, I'm sorry. I'm okay with that, sir.
I don't agree with that. I don't even know if it's of honor tonight.
Any other comments? Have you checked the new business, so you don't have to.
Mr. President?
Yes, sir.
We will continue to have our necessary study sessions if need be, even though if we go with that two meetings in one month or one meeting in a month, if there's a need for our study sessions, will we continue to have those?
Most definitely.
Okay. Thank you, sir.
Mr. President, how many, how many months are you proposing that for? Is that for, that's for summer? Oh, just one month?
July as a trial.
Oh, got it, thank you.
Yeah, the mayor and I talked about that last meeting, I think, and we said, give it a shot, it's one. So that's why I was asking about it, because I, nobody called and said, don't do it. I just want to make sure we're together with the idea. Well, this question come up when we're live, everybody. The five people that are being appointed to the Historic Preservation Group, they already have been approved by the state, or I misread that when Kathy sent us that note. In other words, are we rubber stamping them tonight?
Are this for the appointments to the Historic Commission?
Yeah.
Can we ask Kathy Rosdick to respond to the, it's not a rubber stamp, but I think Kathy can explain why the resumes that were agreed on after interviews, why those resumes were shared with SHPO. If you'll remember, we had, had, had to get the actual commission in place so that we could end up being approved by State Historic Preservation, so that we can start to do the things that will make historic preservation and economic development work together for grants and tax credits and everything. But I think Kathy would be a good person to help explain that process. It, it's not a rubber stamp, so we're just trying to be proactive. I mean, I guess what, what I would say is it would be incumbent on us, important not to approve people that would not then be, be given the okay by the state, but Kathy can explain it, I think, better.
Sure, yeah, I'll try to. I certainly didn't, can everyone hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay. I, I didn't mean to imply that this was a rubber stamp approval or, or anything, because our CLG status depends on the qualifications of the members of the HRC. I had sent the ones that we had, were top candidates between the city council appointments as we thought they were going to be identified and the mayor's top selections to SHPO and said, I feel like these are meeting the qualifications that were outlined in the ordinance and just wanted a verbal commitment that, or a verbal response that, yes, they do indeed meet the qualifications. Those qualifications are outlined in our ordinance that was approved and adopted. So, and I did get a positive confirmation. I was not privy to any discussions about alternative candidates, so I just wanted to make council aware that, that this is one of a few boards that you appoint to, that qualifications are, are necessary and needed, much like property maintenance building and property maintenance. I may be getting the name of that, that committee wrong, but that's another comparable board that does require certain skillsets to be, in order to be appointed. So this isn't a rubber stamp, it was just me being proactive and making sure that our application for CLG status was, we were following, we were on track to, to get our CLG status. So I don't know, I hopefully that clarifies.
I have a question. Who's the second architect on the panel? It did call for two architects?
I, I don't believe it calls for a second architect. I think there's just one architect.
There, the, the top two lines were an architect with two, two different types of architects.
No, I think that you have a historic preservationist and you have an architect who has a preservation background. And we will be, there are two, I'm sorry, Michael. There, there are also two appointments, ex officio appointments that are made. They don't have voting rights, but they do support the work of the board. One will be from the planning commission and one will be from staff. And we also anticipate that someone from planning commission, there are two architects that sit on planning commission now, so we do expect. We don't. We haven't, we haven't approached the planning commission yet, but they're ex officio and they're appointed by the mayor. So once we have the five members, which are the critical ones, is when we would appoint. Probably the staff will be me, because I'm not sure if anyone else would offer up their time, but it will probably be me until such time that we have someone else who can fill the, the role.
Sure. No, thank you for the hard work.
Mr. President?
Can you do one more thing, which is just to explain, spell out what those acronyms mean, SHPO and CLG, just, somebody just sent me a message, so. I, I know, just having been involved and I'm sure David and a few others, but if you would just say what those stand for.
Okay, I'm going to try to get it all right. So SHPO is the State Historic Preservation Office, which is an office under the Pennsylvania Historic and Museum PHMC Commission. So PHMC is the lead, SHPO is the sub-office, the State Historic Preservation Office, CLG is Certified Local Government, and that's a federal designation, but it's administered by our local SHPO.
Okay, now I'm back. So HRC is, is Historic Review Commission, which is different than the Human Relations Commission too, so I hope we're all clear on that. I'm just relaying the.
There'll be a test after, there'll be a test after all the appointments.
All right, I'm taking notes.
Mr. Rose, would you have a question?
No, I, I'm good. I'm good for now. I think we've gone through this HRC, the Historic HRC, and, you know, you made the appointments, and I do recall that we gave Liz and Dave the authority to make the appointments. And I was concerned, of course, afterwards, that, you know, the transparency wasn't there, but I do understand that we gave them the authority to select three, and I distinctly remember that. And they did what they were challenged to do. Could there have been a few other things they could have done, maybe? I don't know. But they did what they were asked to do. And I did have a question. Is there a conflict of interest picking Dave from council to be on there? I did get an answer, and the answer was he's not a voting member at all, but he will be there, attend the meetings, contribute as an architect. And I related that to incident that I had with the state. I served on Clarion Board of Trustees, but we audit them, and I told my boss that I would not vote on anything affecting our department. He told me that it still is apparent that it may look like that. So I had to resign after one month. And I did get a response today, legal response, that there's no conflict of interest. I'm not going to vote no to stop this because it is a parent conflict of interest. If it is, it'll come out in the long run. But right now, it's, it's not how we start this race, it's how we finish it. And I'm going to support it, and you need to know that, because of the approval that we gave some time ago and the work they put into it. And I got more concerned about budget and money than this commission on my mind, so it's important, but it's not as important as the budget and raising taxes, not raising taxes, that's where my concentration is going to lie. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Ms. Rose. You know, on that note, and I've had a couple of conversations with different folks, I like to thank Renee and the administration for working to set up that pool of people for us to check on. But also remember, it's still the liaison to whichever authority they are liaisoned to, to have the priority of making a pick. If they know somebody that is qualified, they can, they have the ability to do that, especially with four new people, or three new people anyway, coming on next year, it's that reservoir of folks can be very, very important, because people coming on are going to need that guidance. But I think it's very important to understand that in the end, I stand corrected, Mr. Wernersky, is that the way we do it or?
Ed, I have to tell you, that is not the way it has been done. When I was on, I was liaison to the sewer authority for two years, and this is why I have asked, what is the process? The process is an enigma. I was the liaison to the sewer authority, but I was given a pick to the water authority. I did consult with Kathy Schott, this is way before we passed our resolution, because we wanted to do applications. So I solicited applicants, but I shared them with Kathy. Kathy similarly had a pick for the airport authority, I believe, but I don't think she was the liaison to the airport authority, and she shared her, this was all very much ad hoc, because we didn't have any guidance. I would have loved to have been able to have put on the sewer authority when I was the liaison, because I went to all of those meetings. So I, I, if that's the, the informal rule that we're going to use, that's great, because it makes sense, because you're the person who knows what that skillset is. It has not been past practice, at least as far as I've been able to ferret out.
Now, Liz, you're right, the practices have changed over the years. One year, God give him whatever he deserves, Mr. Breybender, he became president of board and he took all of the appointments, all of them. I can do this, he says, and he appointed everybody. That was the will of, the will of the president. I like what we have here. Okay, we have two prongs now. We have a reservoir of candidates that you folks grew hard putting together. together. And we also still have that ability to say, hey, I know DJ Monell is going to do a heck of a job, by the way. Thank you for that, Liz, on the zoning board. You know, there are places that I, you know, you talk to, the way we used to do it way back in the golden ages or whatever age you want to call it, is we talked to the head of the authorities, asked them what they were looking for, you know, what's the best that we can do, what can we get? And we would go forward that way. And it's, it's all about communication. You know, you read a resume, anybody proofing them? How many times did we get presidents of universities fired when they found out that their resume wasn't what it was supposed to be? You know?
Yeah, so I think this goes back to even before the presidential change where we talked about a very easy way of doing this, which would be that it would go to the liaison. And if the liaison already had a person on that particular board, then it would go back to the president to select somebody else, which goes to my next point, that any particular council person.
Michael, can you, when did we talk, when did we say that? Because we also passed a resolution. Sophie, do we have, I would love to see that discussion from a committee meeting or a council meeting. That, that doesn't ring a bell with me.
I don't know if you were in that conversation or not, but it was a conversation.
Well, listen, I've never missed a meeting. So where would this conversation?
I did not say it was in a meeting, Liz. I said we had a conversation among council people.
Could you specify?
Be nice, give people a chance.
All right, I'm trying to be nice. I want to know where this conversation took place. Was it pre-COVID?
It took place in council chambers. It took place.
Okay, so it was an unofficial conversation.
It was unofficial conversation between actually multiple council people.
Well, look, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. I'm trying to keep cool. But if it was multiple council people, are you trying to say it was an official meeting? Because then we're going to have to call on Ed Betza.
I did not say it was an official meeting.
Decisions cannot be made that way.
You made a lot of.
It was a, it was a recommend, one, it was for when people were saying we needed a structure, we needed a way of doing this. And I know, in fact, I did speak with Mr. Brennan about it, that that was an easy system way of doing without creating a big rigorous structure. And, and that was fair, which leads us to our next point, that the reason why if the liaison already had somebody on that board, it would default back to the president is because of the past practices of one council person having one appointment to one board. And I think that past practice is, should still be in play today. We'll see how it plays out. I'm not against anybody who has been recommended, but having the ability to appoint multiple persons to any committee or any board, I think that taints the process more than anything else.
Once again, the problem is, I think that people have different ideas of what should be done.
Can I comment on this? I want to, I want to make one thing clear. I'm the person who came on council with a spreadsheet that showed women were underrepresented on boards. Also, people of color were underrepresented on boards. I find it interesting that there was a conversation about an issue that I talked about from the very beginning because I think Renee can can attest that I shared my very crude spreadsheet with people when I came on council. So apparently, there was a conversation among a whole bunch of people on, one person for whom this was my passion, to make sure that we had good representation, skilled people that reflected the community. There's only two women right now on council. And one of them, me, who made this my, my commitment to try and have transparency and changes was not part of this conversation. Really interesting during International, you know, Women's History Month, that one of the two women on council was excluded from this conversation where there may have been consensus reached. Just please think about why we need to improve communication. Side conversations are fine, but we've been in a pandemic for a year. Maybe you had this conversation. That's why I want to know, was it pre or post pandemic? Because I have not subjected myself to coming to a council meeting on the advice of my brother, an epidemiologist for the state of Pennsylvania, because of my age, because of my heart condition. So if there was this conversation and it took place in council chambers, it had to be pre pandemic or maybe it was post, you know, during the pandemic. So that's why I'd like to know more about the, who was there, what the date was, and why that information was, if I couldn't be there, why was it not conveyed to me? You have no idea, no idea how insulting it is to hear that something was decided without the person who made this my issue. I'm not there for power. I'm not there to, to ascend to some other, you know, political position. I'm here to serve the citizens, as I'm sure every council member is. But why would you exclude me from that?
It was, it was a recommendation of how to move forward, and it was pre pandemic. It was before the city, city grows, made their spreadsheets and got their IT project off the ground.
The reservoir of talent that we have from the fifth floor. And if, again, people have somebody else that they also know would be good, then they can bring it to the will of the board. Everybody has the right to say a or nay on it, or comment. Moving forward, I think this conversation may be good because one thing that we definitely can all say is because of this pandemic and this goofy Zoom thing, we don't really communicate. You can send a text, you can say you're going to call me back, and then you send me another text, but you didn't call me back. Conversations go off different directions because of that kind of thing. Anyway, that being said, we have one minute before 7:30. So if anybody wants to take a deep breath, we'll wait a minute and Lori can get the meeting started.
Can I say one thing?
Who?
This is, this is, this is Ed Betza. I just wanted to let, I just wanted to let council know I have a little bit of good news. The property at 2415 Pittsburgh Avenue, which is the corporate glass building, is currently under a tax assessment appeal. In the background of the case is that the school district appealed the assessment of the property back in 2013. It was ultimately reassessed to $550,000. I'm sorry, let me back up. The school district appealed the assessment of $550,300, and it was increased to $612,680. There was an appeal filed by the property owner, which is Passport Realty. They have indicated to me that they are going to withdraw that appeal. And barring any objection on the part of the city, that appeal will be withdrawn. And that increased price of $612,680 will become final. I don't have any reason to, this was not an appeal that we filed. This was an appeal that the property owner filed. Their willingness to withdraw it is, I think, is a benefit to the city. And barring any objection, that will be done this week.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you for the good news.
Thank you. Mr. President, can I just interject? Jim Winarski and I, unbeknownst to to our own selves, each called Accuride. And the manager got back to me and said that the part is coming around April 18th time, and they're trying to get it as fast as possible to put in. I know it's been on the news a lot, and we've been getting a lot of calls. So we got the, that because people wanted to know if we were going to have a noise ordinance and that. I also had sent out pictures that Len Trot had given me. I had taken a tour of all the fire stations before COVID. And there were definitely some needed upgrades in the kitchen areas especially. So that's some of our purchase orders that are on the agenda tonight. And as well as, I'm hoping we get a good vote for Susan G. Hockenberry this evening. Thank you.
Okay, let's take a break. In one minute, we'll get started. One minute. Lori, you're.
the list as in alphabetical order here, as Zoom has created it for us, because people are still registering at this time. So I will not have any accurate list to provide.
Frank, can you say that again? You'll go as, as they came in registered? Is that what you said?
As they are in alphabetical order, Liz, due to their registering. And if somebody comes in, it will just, they'll come in in alphabetical order. They won't come in as time of registration.
Liz is back. Mel will be fine if we start.
Roll call for the city council meeting of Wednesday, March 17, 2021, at 7:30 PM. Mr. Rzynski, Ms. Allen, Mr. Brennan, Mr. Keys, Mrs. Schaff, Mr. Winarski, and Mr. Witherspoon. Please stand for a moment with silence and prayer and the Pledge of Allegiance.
I think we should remember those shooting victims in Atlanta and the rest of Georgia.
I'm sorry, I'm a tad bit late, but I'd like to ask prayers to go out to the Winarski, to the Winarski family, specifically to.
I'm sorry, I didn't put my headset back on. Give me. Dear heavenly Father, we thank you for this day, and we thank you for assembling us today. And we just ask that you help us make prudent, prudent decisions for the city today. And we send up a special prayer for those affected by the violence within our city recently since we last met. And we just ask all this in the name of the most high. And then.
Yes. I'd like to send a special prayers out to the Winarski family. His mother-in-law is in the hospital. She seems to be coming around. But a lot of prayers need to go out to her and the entire family. Thank you. Pledge allegiance to the flag of United States of America, to the republic for which you stand, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we have a motion to accept the minutes from the March 3, 2021 city council meeting and bills for payment on March 19, 26, and April 2, 2021. Ms. Allen, Mr. Brennan, Mr. Keys, Mrs. Shaw, Mr. Winarski, Mr. Witherspoon, and Mr. Rzynski. Ms. Allen, Mr. Brennan, Mr. Keys, Mrs. Shaw, Mr. Winarski, Mr. Witherspoon, and Mr. Brzezinski. I have no repository sales to report this evening. This takes us to public comment, and I would ask the public to please give me your address and state your name clearly.
So we will begin with David Palatas.
Hi, David Palatas, 215 West 41st Street, I have no comment.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Elspeth.
Elspeth Kaylee, 1232 West 11th Street. My comments are concerning the BIU contract on the agenda tonight. And I was wondering, I know you guys can't answer me, but is there an alternative? From personal experience, I feel that BIU is not fulfilling the responsibility to renters, and there seems to be not much oversight over this service we're paying for. I know the checklist of what they're supposed to go over, and they're not going over the entire checklist. And I'm wondering if there's an alternative to paying for this service, or if we can do it internally, and I would appreciate an email response. My email is E L S P E T H dot K dot K O E H L E at gmail dot com. My other concern this evening is the IRG plastics plant. I've heard that, you know, they've bought land and they're going to build, and the administration hails the family sustaining jobs. And I'm wondering also, another question, if any of that has been guaranteed, what would those jobs pay? Obviously, there's concerns about pollution from this plant. So I guess I would like a little more communication about, you know, protection for renters and protection for people who live around these manufacturing sites, and what guarantees does the community have when we allow things like that to occur? Thank you. That's all I have.
You.
Freda Tepper.
Can you hear me okay?
Yes, we can.
Okay, well, I'm, if you hear the birds chirping, I'm out walking in the beautiful Baldwin Park neighborhood. This is Freda Tepper, 1738 West 23rd Street, Erie. No disrespect meant to my councilwoman Liz Allen, who shared the same concern I did over the need to have an orderly process for making appointments. However, I do have a concern that we, it is proposed to be appointing a white male who is the director of the Board of Realtors to the zoning hearings board. I happen to apply for that board, and I do have quite a bit of experience. And not just me, but I just wondered why is it really appropriate to be appointing to the zoning hearing boards the director of the Board of Realtors? That's one concern. Secondly, it's the end of the snow season, it appears. And I do appreciate the plowing of the streets by the city crews. However, I don't appreciate the city crews leaving huge berms of snow in front of crosswalks. It's just not the responsibility of the homeowner, who may live halfway down the block, to clear a huge six-foot pile of snow left on the corner, which is probably too hard to move anyway. There are better ways to finesse the snow than to leave it at the corner. And Brown Avenue was a really remarkable example of this. Just about every corner was inaccessible, the crosswalk. And thirdly, I would like to say that I'm happy to hear that there is help on the way with money from the federal government to deal with COVID-19 and economic issues. Some of it is coming directly to the city and schools. Some of it is coming to the state. I would encourage the council to let their concerns be heard to their state representatives, that no politics be played with the money being sent to the state, that it not be set on by the legislature and not allowed to be spent as intended. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Freda.
Gretchen Gallo.
I would like to comment on the proposed access road to Ravine Drive. My name is Gretchen Gallo. I live at 216 Rosemont Avenue. I grew up in the Frontier Cockwood neighborhood in the 60s, and 26 years ago, I had the opportunity to move back. Since then, my children, along with grandchildren and my siblings, have also purchased homes in this neighborhood. We're not unlike many other families who have migrated back to the neighborhood that we love in the city that we love. The proposed permanent access road on Rosemont-Columbia Circle creates safety issues as well as quality of life issues. It would require the removal of many mature trees, the filling of the natural ravine, and the construction of a winding two-lane road which would follow the contour of an unstable bank. This road would have to accommodate over 1,200 members and staff of the Ori Yacht Club and 20 residents of Fern Cliff, resulting in increased traffic on Lincoln, Vermont, Madison, Cockwa, Bayview, Rosemont, and Columbia Circle. Of greatest concern is the high volume of truck traffic, which would include food service trucks, beer delivery trucks, fuel trucks, boats on trailers, and emergency vehicles. Rosemont-Columbia Circle is a very narrow curved tree-lined street without sidewalks, and therefore, construction of this road would create unsafe conditions for residents who run, walk, or bike daily in this area. The real issue at hand is the poor condition of the Cockwood Bridge. Let's direct our efforts and resources toward solving that problem. Thank you.
Thank you.
Janice Echinton.
My name is Janice Etchison. I live at 376 Joshua Drive. I am very speaking tonight because I'm very concerned about the movement towards embracing the presence of the international recycling plant in Erie. And I am especially concerned because I am very involved in environmental issues in Erie. I'm a member of the Hold Erie Coke Accountable Group, and also of our water, our air, our rights. And I think that even, I know that the city has every right to decide who can have a business in this city. But I think you must take into consideration the people who already live here. When I read in the newspaper that the proposed location for this plant is on the east side, near East 6th Street and East 10th Street, I was awake half the night of thinking about those roadways because I am located on the very east side of Erie. I travel 6th Street, 10th Street, just about every day, back and forth into the center of Erie and back home again. The roads are narrow. There are so many schools in that neighborhood. And we're thinking of so increased heavy traffic of large trucks moving in and out of the area if this plant were to come to fruition. There's East High School, I mean, East Middle School on 7th Street and East Avenue. There's the Boys and Girls Club on East 6th Street. Across from that, there is a charter school. And further down East 6th Street, there's Edison Elementary School. There are school buses. Further down the street from there, there's the John Haran Apartments. Many children live there. And also, it would be very near the location of the plant. I think that to be true to the citizens of this city of Erie, you must consider the location, the traffic, what effects it will have on the children. I am thinking of the children here. And going back and forth to school, the parents dropping them off, and so much traffic as a result. And so that's why I'm here. I want you to think about that and give it sincere, serious consideration. I'm also concerned about the neighborhood. It is referred to as an environmental justice neighborhood. And as a member of Hold Erie Coke Accountable, we certainly know what the effects of the Coke plant were and probably still are to an environmental justice neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you.
Kendrick Tate.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay. Good evening, council. I just have two things to comment on today. First is the reduction of the meetings from twice a month to once a month. I think that reducing the meetings to once a month is not a fair idea for the community. It seems to consider only the lack of summer activities due to pandemic restrictions. I think that the council should recognize this summer as a time to reflect on the needs of the community beyond its ability to provide entertainment over the summer and utilize the opportunity to hone in our government and community relationship to efficiently tackle the issues that may arise once things become normal. I believe that maintaining the regularity of the meetings is essential for maintaining the integrity of city government actions. For example, a council member not to be named, this opens up an apparently likely opportunity to have quote-unquote unofficial conversations about issues that either affect our council's procedure or affect council's ability to be representative of our city. The second thing I want to bring up is regarding the sunset provision for Article 330. With the elimination of the sunset provision clause and the pending contract with the BIU, the integrity of the article needs to be strongly established. I think the owner's rights clause should be equally balanced by a tenant's rights clause, in which tenants have the security of the code enforcement office in addressing the livability of their homes. In my opinion, landlords should be required by the ordinance to provide the tenants with prior and upcoming inspection dates and the inspectors upon lease approval, and code enforcement officers for contact in the case of unsatisfactory maintenance. And that's all I have to say. Thank you, council.
Kendrick, can I get your address, please?
Yes, 1114 West 10th Street.
Margaret Taylor.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you, council. My name is Margaret Taylor. My address is 1015 Chelsea Avenue in Mill Creek, but I own a home on Euclid Avenue in the city of Erie. I'm asking Erie City Council to consider drafting a resolution to endorse the establishment of a national infrastructure bank. Pittsburgh, Philadelphia, and Allentown, as well as Lancaster, Allegheny, and North Hampton Counties have passed resolutions endorsing HR Bill 6422. No other infrastructure or jobs proposal is budget neutral like this one. I've reached out to Scott Ratstetter, a Republican on Erie County Council, and Liz Allen, a Democrat and distinguished member of this council, to research the proposal. It has appeal to both parties because it's budget neutral, and that's why it's so exciting. The National Infrastructure Bank is a depository bank based on the four infrastructure banks that have existed in the United States, starting with the first national bank, created by Alexander Hamilton, and ending with the Reconstruction Finance Corporation during FDR. Most of our roads, bridges, dams, water systems, railways, and electric grids were built by these banks, at no cost to the taxpayer and no increase in the deficit. As a matter of fact, these banks made money. The Reconstruction Finance Corporation helped America emerge from the Great Depression and win World War II. It sparked the tremendous growth in manufacturing that made Erie, Pittsburgh, and the nation thrive, provided Americans with good-paying jobs, and the dignity that goes along with that. The Reconstruction Finance Corporation had a sunset clause, and so it ended in 1947. Since that time, there has been nothing like it. As you well know, states and cities have limited options for raising revenue, and they have to balance their budgets. They can't borrow money from the Fed, which is now at 0.25 interest, like private banks can. Private banks don't pass along these low interest rates to borrowers. But the federal government doesn't have to balance its budget. Alan Greenspan said, quote, "The United States can pay any debt it has because it can always print money." The question is, how do you set up a system that assures that real assets are created, which those benefits are employed to purchase? It's great to have an influx of revenue, like the 79 million Erie's going to get from the CARES Act, with which it can balance its budget. But a national infrastructure bank could provide ongoing access for Erie and other municipalities to low-interest loans. It would be a public bank, not focused on making profits for its shareholders, but on growing the economy and getting a modest return. Erie, along with many other cities across the nation, has shovel-ready projects just waiting for funding. The infrastructure bank would operate in the public interest to provide money for projects which will generate jobs, improve infrastructure, stimulate the need for local manufacturing, and generate productivity, which is the key to economic growth. This is the difference between stimulus money, which the CARES Act is providing, and an ongoing source of revenue to fund projects as needs arise. Erie's economy is not static. We have to evolve and grow in ways that our generation can't even imagine. A national infrastructure bank would be capitalized with treasury debt, just as the previous four banks were. Private investors like you and me, foreign entities, pension, and municipal rainy day funds could buy in and be paid back at 2% above the going interest rate for treasury bonds for the lifetime of the infrastructure. Please consider drafting and passing a resolution in support of this bill. I can assist in arranging phone conferences with the appropriate people to get this done. Liz Allen has my contact information, and she has done due diligence in researching this project, and I thank her for that. Thank you.
Thank you. Liz, if you could share that with us, we'd appreciate it.
I will. I was going to talk about it at the committee report and what's next, so.
Okay. Thank you.
Next is Russell Taylor.
Hello, I'm Russ Taylor. I live at 1015 Chelsea Avenue in Mill Creek, and I own a house at 205 Euclid Avenue in Erie City. I would like to open a public dialogue regarding the proposed international recycling groups, post-use plastic sorting facility. So far, there has been sparse reported investigation of the details of the environmental impact on the population, infrastructure, and natural resources of Erie and the surrounding communities. The site for the plant, the SB 3 Industrial Park, is situated in the center of a rebounding residential community, with the Boys and Girls Club, Edison School-- with the Boys and Girls Club, Edison School, the Barber National Institute Senior Center, and the John Heran Apartments as nearby neighbors. The safety of the children and elderly who live, work, and play there should be a primary consideration. The drastic increase in truck traffic, noise, and air pollution is very concerning for our most vulnerable populations. The already deteriorating roads and infrastructure in this eastside neighborhood will suffer significant damage from the 24/7, 365 truck traffic. The ever-present risk of toxic fires as a plastic sorting facility would also hang over the entire Erie community for the foreseeable future. Scientific studies have shown that Lake Erie fish, wildlife, and humans consume microplastics from Lake Erie waters already. The microplastic pollution will certainly get worse with fallout from plastic flakes the plant will produce. The contamination of our region by disposing of the unwanted plastics from a 750-mile radius, which takes in all the largest population centers in the northeast and Midwest, would wreak havoc on our tourist industry. Along with the dire environmental concerns, there has been little evidence from IRG and its proponents that the experimental project would benefit the Erie area financially. The $100 million plant would yield 50 jobs. Since the facility would be almost completely automated, those jobs would probably offer mediocre wages with little opportunity for advancement. That $100 million is primarily a tax shelter for wealthy investors with the opportunity zone status IRG expects to be granted. With local tax exemptions also likely to be offered, the financial benefits to Erie community are minimal. I hope that every member of city council, as well as other representatives and legislature, legislators, will investigate and make transparent to their constituents a thorough cost-benefit analysis for the international recycling group's planned post-use plastic sorting facility. Just recently, the plastics recycling firm Carbon Light, with a facility in Pennsylvania, filed for Chapter 11 bankruptcy due to the uncertainties in the market for recycled plastic pellets. For comparison, as one truly green industry alternative, the Calypso Medical Marijuana Growing Facility adjacent the proposed IRG site already employs more than 50 people with minimal environmental impact and a much more promising future. I own a house on Euclid Avenue, only a few blocks from the proposed IRG facility. I am very concerned about its impact on property values, as well as the quality of life for residents along the East Lake Road corridor. I'm asking for city council to plan open public meetings with representatives from IRG, state and local government, environmental groups, the news media, and local investors Erie Insurance and Plastech. I think we need to know why Erie Insurance and Plastech think this is a good investment opportunity for our region. I think we, as taxpayers, stakeholders, and concerned citizens deserve to know how collecting plastic trash from all over the northeastern United States benefits us. Thank you.
Thank you.
Ruth Swainy?
Hello, this is Ruth Swainy. My address is 230 Lincoln Avenue in Erie. I am, want to say I'm happy that the burning ordinance is being looked at and maybe changed. But I want to suggest that we change the burning hours to 5 until 9:00 p.m. each day. I have a problem with smoke, and I can't open my windows in the evening and enjoy fresh air because of the smoke from the neighbor's fires. I understand the fascination with fire and everybody buying smoke rings. I just ask that the fire, the burning, happens early in the evening, after which the fires are extinguished, the air can clear up, and I can open my windows and enjoy fresh air. I think in this time of pandemic, we've all come to value clean, fresh air, and I hope city council considers this. Thank you.
Thank you.
Sam Miller?
I, I don't see a way of showing images, though. Is there? Is there a way that the video can pick up images?
We need your name and address first, Sam.
Okay, yeah. James Samuel Miller, 233 Bear Drive in Erie, Pennsylvania, 16505. My comments, the comments will be brief and have to do with the recycling plant. My understanding is that it calls for shredding of all plastics into small chips that could be then put on barges and shipped across Lake Erie to the Canadian refinery facilities. And what I wanted to show images of were how Lake Erie can be extremely rough in the summertime. It's a shallow lake, and and I understand that the Palm Ridge Center displays many of the shipwrecks that lay on the bottom of Lake Erie. My concern is that if they are on a barge to ship these ships over to Canada or on a freighter, that if that freighter goes down in one of the summer storms, we'd lose Lake Erie to plastics ships. So we need to look carefully at that. Appreciate the mayor being present at tonight's meeting and listening to me. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Mr. President, that concludes citizens' to be, or public comment, I'm sorry.
Thank you. Ms. Watson?
Frank, I saw Art Leopold on there. See?
Uh, he's just, he's just watching. He's not providing comment this evening.
Okay, ordinance is for final passage. Council File Number 16209, Official Ordinance 142021, An Ordinance Appropriating the Sum of $49,375 From Unappropriated Anticipated Revenue Received From the Pennilex Sustainable Energy Fund, $25,000, And the Pennsylvania Energy Development Authority Restart Grant, $24,375, And Providing for the Expenditure of, For the Purchase And Installation of a Solar Photovoltaic System For the Central Fire Station. Sponsored by Mr. Witherspoon, Seconded by Mr. Keys. The Council File Bill 16209, and now known as Official File Ordinance 142021, Be Finally Passed by City Council. Ms. Allen, Mr. Brennan, Mr. Keys, Mrs. Shaw, Mr. Winarsky, Mr. Witherspoon, Mr. Brzezinski. City Council Passes Official File Ordinance 142021 By Yea, Seven, Nay, Zero.
Sorry, before you do the second one, is anybody thinking about the comment that one person made about the tenant's rights from this ordinance? The only thing we give with this ordinance was the sunset clause.
Ed, you're muted.
President, may I look? Am I muted again? No, I hear.
Okay.
We're probably hearing it through the, oh. Yeah, I didn't know if you take some time and look at the tenant's rights on this or not.
I believe that this is the technicality, though, so that we, I mean, I think we, we obviously, we've talked about this particular ordinance many times. I think it does deserve additional updating, but this is just so we don't have to keep saying every three years that we want rental inspections. I think I view this more as a first step than a last step, at least the way it was explained to me. Or the way, again, Kathy Rosdick explained it. It's to eliminate having to, every couple of years, come and say, do we still want the ordinance? But there's room for improvement, I would suspect.
We can always amend the ordinance, but instead of bringing the same ordinance in front of us or for renewal every two years, it's a replacement.
This is Ed Betts, uh, may I speak?
Sure.
Um, the, this request right now is just simply to do away with the periodic re-upping of the program. Uh, the program has provided a benefit, and it keeps coming back on your agenda where you have to do something. At any point, if you want to end the program or amend the program, increase it, decrease it, you always have the power to do that by ordinance. It just removes this administrative requirement that every, so often it shows up on your agenda. With regard to the public comment that was made earlier about BIU and the services, and is there other alternatives? And are, and do we want to change perhaps the program? Uh, all of that is certainly available. Uh, what's on your agenda tonight with regard to BIU is that it would simply be a very short period where we could get out of the contract. We're not entering into a long-term contract for the very reason that we want to explore all options. So I think that the, the individual's comment earlier has been addressed. We are looking at other options. Uh, BIU has agreed to continue to serve, and the city continue to use, continues to use BIU, but we're not locked in for any long-term deal. Separate from that, if we want to make amendments or revisions to the contract or to the program, we always have the ability to do that by ordinance.
Yes, where I was talking about the comment that one person made about the tenant's rights not being looked at. Uh, not the, the one you were talking about. They said, but the tenant has no rights with the landlord thing. I didn't understand it exactly. I'm a little bit separated from that now. But, uh, I didn't know if it was something that we should look at, but I think you answered it. You should pass this and then look on to something else, right, Kev? Say yes.
Yeah. I, I would, President Brzezinski, I would just add that I think Ed summed it up very well, that, uh, you know, you've got a lot of options with what's being presented to you. By removing the sunset clause, you can make amendments to the ordinance. And by having, not going into a long-term agreement with BIU, we can also look at other options for service. I can assure you that the rental registration program is something that I and the, and staff are internally looking at. We're going to do some data mining of the registration program and probably come back to you in the next month or so with a report and some, some, at least minor modifications to the program. Uh, but this gives us the flexibility to be able to do that now.
Thank you.
Shall I go ahead?
Yes, please.
Council File Number 16210, Official File Ordinance 152021, An Ordinance Amending Article 330, Landlord and Rental by Removing Section 330.12 Sunset Provision in Its Entirety. Sponsored by Ms. Allen, Seconded by Mr. Brennan. The Council File Ordinance Bill Number 16210, and now known as Official File Ordinance 152021, Be Finally Passed by City Council. Ms. Allen, Mr. Brennan, Mr. Keys, Mrs. Shaw, Mr. Winarsky, Mr. Witherspoon, Mr. Brzezinski. City Council Passes Official File Ordinance 152021 By Yea, Seven, Nay, Zero. Ordinances for First Reading. Council File Number 16211, An Ordinance Appropriating the Sum of $1 Million From Unappropriated and Anticipated Revenue To Be Received From the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania Department of Transportation. The funds will be used to carry out the City of Erie Safe Routes to School Project Through the Transportation Alternatives Set Aside, TA Set Aside Program. The funding will be used for updated signing, pavement markings, traffic control devices, and sidewalk improvements that will enhance the safety of student walking routes in the city of Erie. Sponsored by Mr. Witherspoon, Seconded by Mr. Keys. The Council File Ordinance 16211, Having been read, is hereby adopted on first reading by City Council. Ms. Allen, Mr. Brennan, Mr. Keys, Mrs. Shaw, Mr. Winarsky, Mr. Witherspoon, Mr. Brzezinski. City Council Read and Adopt Council File Ordinance 16211 By Yea, Seven, Nay, Zero on First Reading. Council File Number 16212, An Ordinance Appropriating the Sum of $250,000 From Unappropriated Anticipated Revenue To Be Received From the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania Department of Transportation. The funds will be used to carry out the Downtown Erie Active Transportation Project Through the Transportation Alternatives Set Aside Program. Funding will be used to add bikes, bike lanes, crosswalks, and awayfinding signage system throughout the city's trail network. Sponsored by Mr. Witherspoon, Seconded by Mr. Keys. The Council File Ordinance 16212, Having been read, is hereby adopted on first reading by City Council. Ms. Allen, Mr. Brennan, Mr. Keys, Mrs. Shaw, Mr. Winarsky, Mr. Witherspoon, Mr. Brzezinski. City Council Read and Adopt Council File Ordinance 16212 By Yea, Seven, Nay, Zero. Council File Number 16213, An Ordinance Appropriating the Sum of $28,799 From Unappropriated Anticipated Revenue And Providing for the Expenditure Thereof, 2020 Justice Assistance Grant. Sponsored by Mr. Winarsky, Seconded by Mr. Keys. The Council File Ordinance Number 16213, Having been read, is hereby adopted on first reading by City Council. Ms. Allen, Mr. Brennan, Mr. Keys, Mrs. Shaw, Mr. Winarsky, Mr. Witherspoon, Mr. Brzezinski. City Council Read and Adopt Council File Ordinance 16213 By Yea, Seven, Nay, Zero on First Reading. Council File Number 16214, An Ordinance Appropriating the Sum of $75,000 To Be Received From the Pennsylvania Housing Finance Agency, PHFA, And Made Available Through the Pennsylvania Housing Affordability And Rehabilitation Enhancement Fund, PHARE. The funding will be utilized to provide grants to low- and moderate-income owner occupants for repairs or improvements to their homes. Sponsored by Mrs. Shaw, Seconded by Ms. Allen. The Council File Number 16214, Having been read, is hereby adopted on first reading by City Council. Ms. Allen, Mr. Brennan, Mr. Keys, Mrs. Shaw, Mr. Winarsky, Mr. Witherspoon, Mr. Brzezinski. City Council Read and Adopt Council File Ordinance 16214 By Yea, Seven, Nay, Zero on First Reading. Council File Number 16215, An Ordinance Appropriating the Sum of $400,000 From Unappropriated Revenue To Be Received From the Liquid Fuels Tax Fund And Providing for the Expenditure Thereof. Sponsored by Mr. Witherspoon, Seconded by Mr. Keys. The Council File Number 16215, Having been read, is hereby adopted on first reading by City Council. Ms. Allen, Mr. Brennan, Mr. Keys, Mrs. Shaw, Mr. Winarsky, Mr. Witherspoon, Mr. Brzezinski. City Council Read and Adopt Council File Ordinance 16215 By Yea, Seven, Nay, Zero. This takes us to new business.
For the remainder?
Mr. President? Motion to move the balance of the agenda?
Have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Witherspoon. Uh, any separations?
Number nine.
Number 10. Anybody else? Yeah, Lori?
I gotta find it. Got a lot. I have different numbers than you guys. Okay.
Why is that?
Um, you just order the resolutions in a different order than what's actually on the agenda. Okay, motion to move the balance of the agenda. Ms. Allen, Mr. Brennan, Mr. Keys, Mrs. Shaw, Mr. Winarsky, Mr. Witherspoon, and Mr. Brzezinski. Okay. Council File Resolution That Mark Tannenbaum, 5500 Niemeyer Road, Erie, PA 16509, be appointed to the Historic Review Commission, HRC, for a three-year term expiring March 17, 2024. Discussion?
Mr. President?
Mr. Brennan?
Yes. Now, I want to do a kind of talk about Mark and why, why he was chosen. He was chosen for his construction and real estate experience. He's actually the executive director of PACA. I know we sent out all the resumes and application information, so we should have that for a while, which will kind of help us kind of understand a lot of these candidates. PACA has won a, several awards under Mark's leadership. They won a Disrupt Erie Award. PAC also won a preservation, Erie Historic Preservation Award. Mark has construction and development experience. He has a long history of rebuilding properties. He's knowledgeable about many properties and also the history of Erie. He has a background in real estate, and he does know the value of preservation according to his application materials. He's very appreciative of historic preservation. He's looking forward to help our city with a preservation plan and to move forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Keys?
First of all, I'd like to say I have great respect for Mr. Tannenbaum and the work that he's doing. I separated this particular issue because a councilperson has more than one appointment to a particular authority or commission, and I think it sets a one thing.
Mr. President, I'm getting feedback.
Mike, who's the feedback? Maybe a ghost, Mr. Spoon, I don't know. At least it doesn't know.
Okay.
Can you hear me now, Mr. Spoon?
Yes, now and clear. Yes, sir.
Yeah, and so, let me start over. I do have a great respect for Mr. Tannenbaum and what he has done and continues to do for the city. My problem with this is that a councilperson having more than one appointment to a particular board, authority, or commission has the ability to skew their influence on a particular board or committee, and it's been pretty much past practice that one appoint, one councilperson would appoint one person. And I think that it's a, a rule, even if it's not in the books, that we should keep as a past practice. And so, nothing against the person who was chosen, but against the process, in the process, you know, also amplifies the fact that we also want transparency on boards and authority. That's all.
I'd like to speak to the statement that the past practice has been that only one councilperson has an appointment to an authority. This is why I have asked, from the time I got on council, what is the practice for rotating appointments? I was told, everybody gets their turn. To this day, I do not know how those turns work, other than since we established a process by a resolution. We have a resolution now that should be guiding us. When I've asked about this in the past, so I'm told it was a turn, was the turn by alphabetical order? Was it by when you came on council? Was it by the last time you made an appointment?
Liz, we've established that. It changes every presidency. We know there's a problem there.
Okay. But, but what was stated is not accurate. That's why I asked, can we have the information about every appointment that at least has been made since I was elected to council? Because I guarantee you that it will show that councilpeople have appointed more than one person to a board. There was never a thing that said, you can appoint one person to say the water authority, and then you never appoint anyone again. That, that's just not accurate. Every time we talked in particular about, about this particular commission that we've created, but in general about appointments, I have stressed that there is a new process that we adopted. A process where the administration working with CityGrowth asks people to apply for these various positions. It's a very laborious process, because we found out just last week, there is one board where people hadn't been reappointed since like 2012. Water Authority, appointments that had been lapsed for years. We can't, we, we have, it's why I always talk about process and procedures. When you have processes and procedures, there's always probably going to be some political element. I can guarantee this is not a, a political element here. David and I sat in on interviews with various candidates for HRC. They were really good interviews, learned something from all of the candidates, which you're always going to learn if you interview people. With Mark Tannenbaum, I think one of the strengths he, he brings is that, you know, he's restoring a historic building, but as we've talked, historic preservation has to work. There, there should be an economic develop, you know, an economic benefit from it. He knows about the, the ups and downs, the, the pros and cons, the cost of historic preservation. I remember Mark talking to us about, you know, these old buildings were not built with ADA requirements in mind. So when you have to put in an elevator, as you should, so that you can, you know, make sure that people with disabilities can, can be able to use the buildings, that's a very expensive proposition. So I, I just, I, I agree with Ed that, you know, it, it has changed with every president, but
Unfortunately.
But, but where does that leave us? That's why I would like to know, because I can tell you, I've hardly appointed anybody. I pointed three people to the water authority, but it's the same position, because the first two people ended up moving out of town. So maybe don't get on the water authority, because maybe it means you'll leave Erie. But that wasn't like I was like, you know, having big sway on the water authority. And that was before we had a process. I talked to some other, at least one authority member, you know, what are the needs here? What are the skill sets? I mean, maybe this is one of those things that it's like a, what do I say, a, a learning process or a growing process to figure out how best to do this. But county council, I looked at county council because county council, when Jay Brenneman was councilman on there, was trying to update and make its process more transparent. And I think the other thing to make clear is that if people, if applicants are seeking these out, these positions out for, I don't know, name recognition, that's really not what it's all about, because the, the meetings I attend, I mean, these people are volunteers and they're carving time out of busy schedules to be able to do the work of these authorities, all of which require doing homework, weighing the issues, and, you know, many times voting on issues of importance to the city. So. That's what I have to say. Mark, I just, I know, it was said that Mark Tannenbaum, nothing against him. He is really a visionary and so historically knowledgeable about so much. I met him several years ago, and he talked to me and toured PACA and could talk about all the buildings around him, and currently is putting in bathroom facilities for handicap accessible needs at his building. He is really passionate at what he does, and I really think he is a leader in the area of historical knowledge. At PACA right now, they're collecting pictures and postcards of long ago Erie, and they're growing quite a collection there. I, every time I go there and visit, there's something new to see in that building.
Kathy, I, everybody, I don't think anybody is arguing the fact that Mark is not a, a super person besides being a well-versed person in history of Erie. The problem that Mr. Keys is having is the two appointments by one man. Can I offer this, just as may be a solution, David? Would you let your name come off of that and let Michael Keys sponsor Mark Tannenbaum for the good of the order?
I would have absolutely no, I would have absolutely no problem at all with that.
Mr. Keys, would you do that?
I, I really don't have, Mr. President, can I speak?
Sure.
Yeah. Go ahead, I'm sorry.
Oh, sure. Yeah, I mean, I, I don't take any authorship at all on this. I mean, I just want the best people for these boards. I mean, if my name's not attached to, I really don't care whatsoever. There's going to be, there, there would never be any undue influence, and I'm kind of offended by that, even being brought to the table. But I, Mr. President, I would have no problem whatsoever attaching someone else's name to appointing Mr. Tannenbaum. Absolutely not.
Mr. President?
Mr. Witherspoon?
That's honorable, very honorable, Dave. However, Dave was appointed by the mayor, and I don't think we have the power, and Mr. Betts can correct me, to remove David.
No, I'm
He's talking about the appointment.
Yeah.
Mr. Witherspoon.
Oh, okay.
Not his appointment, but him making
Oh, okay, okay. My bad.
It's confusing. What do we have to do to make that happen, though, Mike? You okay with that?
Waving the rules and so, I don't
Is it waving the rules or amending the resolution?
Mr. Betts, I think we need some help.
I, I wish I could give you help. It's kind of a unique situation. I, I don't, I think that you would just simply amend the resolution that is before you and just correct it from that it's now being changed to Mr. Keys from Mr. Brennan. That's all I think you need to do.
Let's do that, Dennis.
Miss, miss, Mr. President?
Mr. Witherspoon. Yes, sir.
I, you know, I, I just heard all the accolades for Mr. Tannenbaum. And I understand what Councilman Keys is saying, that there was two appointments by one person. If I look back, I would say, yeah, maybe he should have said, well, I got one, Ms. Allen got one, maybe we should throw it back to council to make the third choice. That could have happened, but it didn't. Now, how would this affect what we have sent in already?
Not all this, it would still be the same, Mark Tannenbaum, just a different person's sponsorship.
Well.
I think.
May I, Mr. President?
Yes, please.
In the past, if somebody sponsored a resolution and then for some reason they couldn't come to the meeting, we could just amend it. Like, you know, we don't even have to go through the process of amending it. We could just actually change the name of who is sponsoring it and seconding it.
Let's do that.
Mr. Betts, does that sound?
Agreed. You, you follow a slightly different procedure, which is actually pretty unique and pretty cool, but you, you pre-write your, your motions. But the, the way a meeting can actually work is you could actually make a motion from the floor and have a second. You don't, you don't operate that way, but that's essentially all that you have to do. Somebody has to make a motion, second, and move forward. So if Mr. Keys wants to make a nomination, there, I have absolutely no objection whatsoever to that. And if Mr. Brennan at the same time wants to withdraw his motion or, or not make it, I have no objection to that. So I think that Ms. Watson's suggestion is perfect.
Looking for some middle ground here, so we don't lose the time that everybody put into it.
Well, since there's a concern about whose name is on nominations, I would suggest that Kathy Shaw, who's been involved in the discussion about historic preservation, could actually make the nomination and then have somebody else second it. I mean, because if we're opening it up to new nominations.
No, we're not. All we're doing is changing the name on this.
Okay. I just wanted, just wanted clarity.
Okay, so the resolution just says sponsored by Michael Keys and still Mr. Tannenbaum. Just looking for middle ground here, folks. Mr. Keys was heard that he doesn't like the idea of having more than one appointment per councilperson, and I think Mr. Brennan is happy because Tannenbaum is still going to be there.
I'll make the motion. I, I move to, to amend the number nine under new business, and I will sponsor the resolution to appoint Mr. Tannenbaum to the historic building preservation.
I think we said that, didn't we?
Yeah, we need a second for that. Just this motion.
I'll second the motion.
Yeah, we all will.
And then call for the vote.
Okay, voting on the resolution sponsored by Mr. Keys, seconded by Ms. Allen, that Mark Tannenbaum be appointed to the Historic Review Commission for a three-year term expiring March 17, 2024. Ms. Allen, Mr. Brennan, Mr. Keys, Mrs. Shaw, Mr. Renarsky, Mr. Witherspoon, Mr. Brzezinski. Motion passes seven to zero. Okay, we have a motion sponsored by Mrs. Shaw, seconded by Ms. Allen. Resolution sponsored by, oh, we said that. Erie City Council hires Susan Hockenberry, Coaching and Consulting, SG Hawk LLC, to assist on helping Erie City Council draft a code of civility. The cost of this will be $2,100 plus cost of published materials, $500.
I separated that because I'm looking ahead a little bit. In next January, we're going to have three brand-new people here. I think maybe we should hold Ms. Hockenberry until next January or February, whatever, to have her come in and meet with the new group. I think we're, I think we're kind of under control here.
I would, excuse me, Mr. President, I want, I would like to read what she had sent us in her proposal, and it says, "Recent events at Erie City Council meetings have resulted in calls from citizens for council to address civility among council members. A proactive response by establishing a code of civility will allow for a pivot from a criticism towards a positive. Future-focused enhancement of the City of Erie would join the ranks of leading jurisdictions, and this forthright approach crafted by and customized for the City of Erie would provide positive public relations today and leave a legacy for tomorrow. Serving in local elected office is an honor and brings with it many duties, such as important legal responsibilities. In addition, it involves dedication, caring, building trust, embodying this positive spirit of community as equal parts of the job. The diverse and various perspectives and experiences of the elected officials of the city shape the way all of the duties of the city council are executed. Maximizing the benefits of the various diverse perspectives takes intentional effort. This goes beyond procedures, rules, courtesies, or protocol. It involves drawing on the strength of the group and taking time to memorialize sharing understanding in written form. Ultimately, this assist with agenda setting and decision-making, it develops the governing board's overall ability to handle conflict constructively." Throughout the United States, cities often adopt codes of civility. By customizing a code to the unique and special attributes of Erie, this project takes civility from mere statements to commitment. Through customization, the board gains confidence that they can meet meaningful standards of conduct they expect of themselves and each other. Scope of Service: I assist boards and individuals by providing a process that crafts a path towards, forward in a variety of circumstances. I conduct facilitation, training, and coaching to help achieve higher performance. For the city of Erie to develop a code of civility, I would propose the following process. Initial kickoff session explaining the project and the contributions needed and benefits that accrue to council. Two, one, two-on-one interviews with each council member. Follow-up session with whole council after the interviews with a presentation on the learnings about the group priorities and a facilitated discussion and a drafting session of the code of civility. It does go on, and I can read more because, and I, you know, but maybe I won't. But anyways, yes, Dave and I are leaving, but we do want to be an integral part of the community after we are done. And I will volunteer my time to sit down with future council members and discuss what I have learned. I plan on being active, um, at the same time being able to spend time with my family. So I, um, would be happy to teach fellow council people in the future about, um, what I have learned. Thank you.
I want to strongly support Kathy's initiative in seeking out a consultant to help us with this and to, and to thank Kathy for offering to mentor incoming council people. But I think this also gives us the potential to have a training component in place for when council members are on-boarded and to, um, renew our own commitment to training. I think one of the things, if you're a person on, on city council, you're also likely involved in other community groups. I know I certainly am. I'm on other, uh, boards, I'm on other, you know, groups. And so even though you may not be there as a city council person, I mean, some of the social justice stuff I'm in is, I would have been interested whether I was on council or not. But I think that the training is useful because wherever you go, you're perceived as, hey, you're a city council person. Um, and I really hear, I had read the information that Kathy had forwarded from Susan, but hearing it out loud about being a model of, of civility as we work really hard to, um, put Mayor Schimber's vision into action about being welcoming and, and diverse and celebrating and world-class education. I, I'm not doing it as well as the mayor has it down. But think about the benefit, the branding, if you will, of having a city council also be established as a place that has a code of civility. And I don't, this isn't directed at council members as well. I mean, think about, we've had some testy moments of people speaking at the, at the microphone. Um, at least in this, you know, the three years I've been here. We don't, you know, there've been times where they've had to actually be ruled out of order. And this could have been on a variety of different topics. We've had, um, some very, we've heard some very personal attacks on council people. So this isn't to say, you know, so we, we learn how to manage that, but we also model it to the people who want to come up and speak. I, I just, when I talked about the, um, you know, International Women's Day, um, I spoke at Perry Square, and it was, it was one of the things that I ended up talking about, about the importance of, um, you know, words. So, um, it's something I had learned from a recent seminar I was on about redlining, where Dr. Mindy Fullalove talked about, she's the person who, um, she's a psychiatrist, but she's also an urban design expert. And she said, and, and this just stays with me. She said, "Because of the pandemic, it's like we've suffered a national heart attack." She said, "We need cardiac rehab. Everybody is yelling at each other." So she, it was not an accusation, it wasn't about a political party. But think about how that, I, I think she summed up the way that the, the, kind of the national, I don't know, character is right now. Everybody is yelling at each other. So wouldn't this be a good time to, um, get some tools on how to tone down the yelling? Maybe, maybe you don't just apply it to council, but it helps other places anyhow. So I strongly support Kathy's resolution. And I thank her for, from the bottom of my heart, for taking the initiative to go out and find some, some training that is affordable and sounds really actionable. Thanks, Kathy.
Mr. President. Uh, I want to thank Kathy for her hard work. But I, I'm also gonna say, Kathy, I don't need another session to go to. But since you throwing it on the table like you did, uh, it sounds good. Uh, I also in agreement with the president, you know, can we wait until, uh, the new folks come in? And then I, I'm playing back and forth on the trainings that I mentioned previously. Uh, civility, uh, with, uh, penalty civility with, uh, the state auditor general's office. And I served on the civility, uh, that the city had in combination years ago with Edinburgh University. Uh, it has helped me to get through a lot of situations here, even on council. Do we need that now? Uh, if I look back at, uh, some of our sessions, yes, we do. Yes, we do. But keep in mind, all the training of civility that you can get, we are all individuals and every one of us have a button that when it's pushed, civility go out the window. That's normal, that's normal, that's human. Because you react to situations that are confronted, that you're confronted with. Uh, I think, that's just my opinion. I think we have nine months to go. We still in the pandemic. We still have issues that we agree and don't agree on. And hopefully, we can agree to disagree and continue to talk to each other. That's very, very important to me. And there ain't one of you guys that I don't love from the bottom of my heart. But I don't have to vote with you, I don't have to agree with you, but I must respect you as a human being, as a council colleague. That is important. Kathy, you've done a lot of work on this. And, uh, I did read, uh, some of that information that you forwarded to us. Uh, it's interesting. I, I think if we can get together and go through this training, but I would also say that we need to make plans for the new members that's coming on to go through their training. And you have said, Kathy, uh, you're willing to come back. Well, that's the same as training the trainers. Once we go through this, we are all trainers. We can train the new people ourselves. And I'm sure this lady, uh, is a phone call away if we have any questions there. So am I for it? Yes, I'm for it. Uh, if the vote goes to wait the next year, well, that's where it goes. Uh, but I do think we can use it. I really do. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Witherspoon. Mr. President? For the good?
Mr. President?
Yes?
Yes, I just wanted to make a comment on that. Um, I just want to thank Kathy, uh, also for bringing this forward and Liz for her support. But, uh, you know, I, again, I'll be, uh, again, I have nine months left, but I'll be continuing to work on city boards and hopefully commissions, uh, if, if I'm allowed to. So I'd like to, um, uh, I think this, this training would, would be valuable. I never got, undergone, undergone training like that before, so it sounds very interesting. And, uh, I think it would be useful. So I just wanted to at least note, uh, you know, to say thank you, that I would support this. And also, um, because I'll continue to, to serve our city in any capacity I could in the future. And I'll continue to, uh, I would pass on that knowledge to whoever I could also. Thank you.
Thank you, Dave.
Mr. President?
Mr. Wood.
Hi. I'd just like to add, uh, although, uh, I've been at this now for 11-plus years, uh, you never stop learning. And, uh, if, uh, we can take something from this, learn from this, pass it on to future councils, then this isn't a big price to pay. Uh, I appreciate the effort from, uh, Ms. Schaff to look out for our council, our colleagues to come up with some type of, uh, resolve we can do just to understand each other. And, uh, to like what Mr. Witherspoon said. We don't have to agree, we just have to respect each other. Uh, we've been, we're all adults, and, uh, I do believe every one of us has the right thing in our heart and in our mind on for the good of the city. So with that being said, thank you, Kathy. I am in full support of this.
Any more discussion?
Call for the vote?
Voting on the resolution. Ms. Allen, Mr. Brennan, Mr. Keys, Mrs. Shaw, Mr. Winarski, Mr. Witherspoon, Mr. Brzezinski. Motion passes seven, yays, zero nays. That takes us to committee reports.
All right, Liz? Go ahead, my dear.
Okay, I had a busy couple weeks, so I might talk fast. Um, I think I mentioned that last Blight of Property Review Committee, previous one, I had asked about what the cost is of blight. And I want to thank Aaron Snipper for getting that information just in the last year. The properties on that blight of property list, um, owed three, or had not paid, uh, $3,113, $679 just in property taxes. And Kathy Rosdick has, at the meeting, actually asked if there's a way to also, um, get additional cost factors of how blight affects a neighborhood. Um, on that infrastructure bank research, Margaret Taylor had sent me an email and asked me if I could participate in a webinar, uh, which I did last Thursday night. It was really interesting. It was like, uh, like being in a college classroom, a history lesson, about how, um, FDR had used an, an infrastructure lending program. And I think, uh, going forward, probably the best thing would be to, um, for me to reach out to Scott Rastetter on Erie County Council and see if the county is going to be preparing a resolution and also to get information from those municipalities in Pennsylvania, which have passed resolutions supporting this. Um, it was a, I have to say, a pretty heady Zoom session because, um, there were historians on board, economists, um, people with a lot of in-depth knowledge of how infrastructure can be, um, financed. So I'll, I'll be following up on that. On Saturday, I was part of another Zoom, um, from the, hang on for one second. So I'm doing my committee report. I'm doing my committee report.
Civility, my dear civility.
I don't think he, he's in the other room. So he was, he was joking with somebody. Anyhow, so I'm on the Erie Library, did a, a Zoom on resiliency, um, during the COVID on the part of government. Uh, Michael Outlaw was on there also from the city, Kathy Dahl Kemper. Uh, Kevin Arrington was the, um, the host. Um, Doug Smith from the county was on there, uh, Cole Shenley. I, I might have missed somebody. But I think the thing that struck me was, um, when, um, I think it was Kevin talked about, um, Kathy Dahl Kemper talked about burnout among the, uh, county health department staff, which has been at this for a year. And I think it was Kevin mentioned what a big role the community centers have played in trying to, um, you know, get COVID under control here. And so I think, I just wanted to acknowledge that, um, I learned something from being on that Zoom and just want to thank the community centers for all the effort they've done in conjunction, in a lot of ways, with the city, um, doing outreach, whether it was masks, you know, uh, testing and vaccinations. Um, Monday, I, there was a land bank meeting, and I think this will make people who follow, you know, revitalization issues will make people happy that the land bank is going to be, um, you know, getting its footing and is, um, going to be moving more toward, um, uh, rehab of housing instead of, you know, just demolition. Uh, one of the problems is that a lot of times when these properties come into, um, they get on the blighted list or then are acquired by the land bank, that they are so far gone that they can't be rehabbed, no matter how much, you know, affection you might have for a particular place. So I think that that's, um, a good trend. Um, I went to the new American Council meeting today, uh, led by Nikan, uh, Asteric, uh, Carpenter. Amazing group of people. Again, um, I just learned a lot because there was a lot of information presented about COVID in Erie, reaching out to those, um, um, you know, people who may have a language barrier. The mayor was there, he talked about, um, his vision. It was just a really good meeting, um, really good discussion about economic development. I learned a lot about that Paramount, um, group, which is doing entrepreneurship here. Um, things with, that sometimes we hear about, but it's hard to do a deep dive into. And then the last thing on, um, the Ravine Park, I know that neighbors are gonna be, um, starting a petition drive about that proposed access road. And I just want to point out, if you're thinking about context for things, in 2007, Ed, I don't know if you were on council at the time, the Port Authority had proposed subdividing the property there and then selling it. And, uh, people didn't want to do that. And then there was actually a proposal from the Western Conservancy to take over what's called Ravine Park, and nothing ever happened. And here we are, all these years later. There is a lot of erosion there, and the Port Authority had just done a study at a cost of $10,595 of how to stabilize the bluffs all the way from Ravine Drive going east. So just expect that there's gonna be a lot of questions raised.
I think it was 1980, 1980, when, uh, the city gave that property to the Port Authority.
Yeah, well, I think, I, it was 75, according to a, a news story I read. And then in 2007, 2008 is when the Port Authority wanted to subdivide it. So I'm just saying that I think we didn't kind of learn from that particular controversy. But anyhow, that's, that's my report.
Thank you. I'm gonna move over to Mr. Winarski.
Thank you.
Just to confuse things.
Thank you, Mr. President. As Ms. Schaff had mentioned in our caucus meeting, uh, I did hear from, uh, Representative from Accuride, uh, Mr. Malewski. He did have the courtesy to call me back, which was great. Uh, he did mention that, uh, they had no inkling that this new environmental fan they're putting up was going to cause the noise that it has. So, uh, he did inform me that the company is actually paying extra money to have the muffler system that they're gonna put on this fan, developed and fabricated sooner at an extra cost just to help with this noise issue. The only thing, uh, we can ask is our neighbors on the east side that hear it more so than, uh, other parts of the city. I do hear it up at my house also. To, uh, please have some patience there. Uh, I know it's definitely annoying, but, uh, uh,
have some patience there. I know it's definitely annoying, but the issue is being addressed. Just so the people of Erie realize too, Accuride does employ over 290 people and it's, it's a great business we have in our community that have been in business there since 1999. So we appreciate the patience of the neighbors until they get this issue resolved. There was one citizen that had mentioned something that she had talked to Ms. Allen about that National Infrastructure Bank. That sounds pretty, pretty interesting and could be a viable asset that we could possibly put in place here in the city. But without getting all the information, I know we had decided to go with the finance meeting regarding that water lease money, go to a regular study session, maybe at our finance meeting with Ms. Schott's approval, maybe we can look into that. But I'd appreciate if Ms. Allen would get out the information she has got on this and pass it on to council members. And one last thing, it, it seems the last few years on council, these appointments we've been making to both the boards and commissions have risen up to a little bit of an issue. I'm going to go a different route and I want to thank the people who have been appointed to these boards and the commissions for their dedication to helping out the different cities, services and authorities that are very, very important to making the Erie community a better place to live. I, for one, in none of mine has there been any politics involved. I've always looked for the good candidate to do the job for the good of the city. So once again, I just want to thank all the volunteers, because all these are volunteer positions, for their time and effort in making our city a better place to live. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Brennan.
Thank you, Mr. President. Kind of want to repeat what Mr. Wannarski said. Yeah, I want to thank all the people for stepping up. You know, they went through a process. They submitted applications, resumes. There's some talented people out there. We were looking for certain experience, certain people that really know what they're doing, because we really want them to help our city. So, you know, these are not paid positions. These are, these are things that they want to do because they have certain skills, certain experience, and they want to benefit the city. So Laura Gunson was appointed today, many others, Gene Pepper, Craig Pepper, Mark Tannenbaum, which we already talked about. But I just want to again, thank them. The last item I had is the parking authority. I think we discussed this before with municipal service agreement. I know that some of these items were discussed before. I just want to kind of repeat, the administration is currently meeting internally with the departments to review the various ideas. Nothing has been decided yet. I know there was some activity in the media about parking and that those were some ideas put out by the parking authority, but nothing's finalized. The city's researching best practices and evaluating different options. There's just a lot to look at. And I know the city wants to take their time to look at this. I know it's been some time, but you know, I know we want to move quickly as possible. The issue is really resolved around maintenance of infrastructure, paying for technology upgrades, and then how do, how do we, how do we, how do we pay for this? So I did receive some input from residents and some business owners, of course, somewhat free parking. Some do not want any increases or additional meter coverage. And some want to look at adding meters in certain areas. So I think we've got to kind of look at both, both of these and try to make the best decision for our city and for, you know, financing infrastructure and so forth. It's, again, we're not going to please everybody, but I think we just need to do diligence and get that input from business owners and from, from anyone that can help us. Thank you.
Thank you, Dave. Ms. There, I'm sorry, Ms. Schott. Oh, there you go, my dear.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'm glad we voted on 16211 today with the routes to school project, transportation set aside and things to help our kids go to school. This year, I saw two young children, look, elementary, walking along the Buffalo Road area. But they were not on the road, but they were walking on snowman, snow mounds in an area where the sidewalks weren't taken care of. And as I was watching them walk, I'm like, oh my goodness, it would just take one little misstep and they would have fallen from the snow mound into the street. And Buffalo Road, as you know, is a very busy street. So I'm, I'm thankful for anyone who helps our kids go to school each day. And also for 16214, that's so helpful to be able to get a couple thousand dollars into home house improvements. I've talked about that before. You can see some improvements going on. But that really goes a long way sometimes to side your house or to fix a roof or something. So I think that's good money. I tried getting on the planning commission meeting yesterday, but they were having to wait and some technical issues. And I wasn't able to take the time. I had another thing going on, so I had to get off. But I did. Have a nice day. Thank you.
Mr. Witherspoon.
Thank you, Mr. President. Am I muted? No?
No, we can hear you.
Oh, you can hear me. Okay. Thank you, sir. I've been talking with Dave Moverhill regarding the bridge, what's that, ravine? And parts of those bridge, that bridge continues to fall. And the roads that we're talking about, that we surveyed two different areas there. And we want to build a temporary road for the folks can get in and out. But more important, that we can get our emergency vehicles to them if they need it. We, we have to fix that bridge because if, unfortunately, if the bridge, you know, starts falling apart and hit someone or hit a car and the car drive into the side, we, the city, would be liable. So hopefully, we can work something out with the residents there. It's a temporary inconvenience, but it's something that we really need to do. And hopefully, they would understand. That's all I have, sir. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Witherspoon. Mr. Keys?
He's muted.
I would like to salute all of our Irish brethren today on their holiday. I happen to personally been born on St. Patrick's Day. And so it's a day that I hold in high regard for that reason. But for the good of the order, I have nothing else. Everyone have a good evening.
Hi, blinding, you see the blinding bloke, you?
All right, everybody's Irish today. Let's see, who's still here? Mr. Bess? What'd I miss?
No, I'm here. I have nothing additional.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Mayor, I think you're the last one, huh?
Okay, thank you very much, Ed. And first, Michael Keys, happy birthday. That's great. And I've got, I'm going to be quick because getting close to my bedtime here. First of all, I just want to say I really appreciate the section of the meeting today where you unanimously approved Kathy Schott's resolution, you know, to hire Susan Hockenberry to draft the code of civility. I mean, that, I think that's a great step forward and I really appreciate all you doing that. Next, I want to talk about the two big dollar things real quickly. We need to talk a lot more about both of them, I know. But as you know, we just became aware of that $79.08 million that will be getting into the American Rescue Plan. And I'm still kind of on a high just from learning about that because I think it really gives us a unique opportunity to help the people in the area that need it the most and to really transform our city and move it forward. I think it's a once in a lifetime opportunity, maybe once in several lifetime opportunity, to, to really do some transformation in Erie. And we don't know all the rules yet. In fact, you know, we were on a call earlier today discussing them with, with a representative of Senator Casey. And he, most of our questions, he said, well, we still don't know that for sure, you know. But I can tell you, once we know the rules, we're going to be open and honest about that. And we'll be open and honest with all of you and welcome your input. And I know as somebody, as a couple of you have already said, there'll be a lot of people asking for money based on this, but we want to use it the best possible way. I'm going to participate in a meeting tomorrow that Kathy Dahl Kemper is doing because besides the city getting money, as you know, every other municipality in Erie County is getting money and, and the, the county is getting a significant amount, a little over $53 million. So there's a huge opportunity here. If we work together and, and really do what's best, I, I, and it's really targeted at the people hurt by COVID-19 and people with low income and that sort of thing. And again, I think that gives us an opportunity really to lift Erie up. So look forward to talking to you about that in a lot more detail once we know the details of what we're allowed to do. A second major dollar item is, you know, the use of that $78.7 million that's left from the water authorities prepayment of their lease with us. If you remember the 2018 budget, those you that were here, it was actually the 2019 budget that we did in December of 2018. That was the first budget my team and I had done. We became well aware of how bad the city's finances were then because before we did anything on the budget, just moving everything forward a year, we were short $11.5 million when we started working on that budget. I think we've made a lot of good progress in the last couple of years. I think this is another good step in the right direction. But I don't want to do anything until all of you really understand and believe in what we're trying to do. There may be some, some questions that we don't have an answer to yet because they're two, three years in the future. But yeah, I, I really believe we can really move Erie forward, make it much better financially. It's, it's really a huge step. Doesn't completely solve it, but it's a huge step towards solving what, the second and the three major financial problems that the PMI group had identified when they did our audit. So and the last thing I just want to say, so I look forward to talking with you more about that in the week or two ahead. And by the way, I didn't see any of your questions about that. So I definitely want to see those, see Paul's response and have a chance to be involved with that. And the last thing I just want to say is I look forward to seeing most, if not all of you tomorrow, when you'll get an update from all of our department heads on what's going on in their departments at 1:00 PM tomorrow. So thanks very much for everything and I'll see you at 1:00 PM, if not before that.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just have one thing. Kathy and Liz, we get together with Paul and find out when would be a good time for a study session or an extended finance meeting, whichever you guys think was better. Okay? I guess that's everything. Did I, Teresa? I may have forgot Teresa. She's probably at the hospital too. Okay, anyway, good night, folks. Happy St. Patrick's Day and happy birthday to Mikey.
Stole it, stole it, Michael. Happy birthday.
City Council adjourns at 9:15 PM. Ms. Allen, Mr. Brennan, Mr. Keys, Mrs. Shaw, Mr. Wannarski, Mr. Witherspoon, Mr. Brzezinski.